All of us, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, January 26th, 2022 meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to audit. Ask everyone to join me in saluting the flag before I read the executive order and remote participation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. Thank you. This meeting is being held under remote participation. I'm going to read the order. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Master General on Chapter 30A, Section 20, that order was effective immediately and until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, by action of legislature, the order was extended until April 1st, 2022. I'm going to call the role Commissioner Stady, President. Commissioner Collins.
President.
Commissioner Shae is present. We have a quorum. Number three, we have scheduled an executive session today, but we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'd like a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Master General on Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation matters if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's litigation, litigating position as declared by the commission chair.
Want to check in the motion? When the motion went into executive session, Commissioner Stady.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and we're going to go into executive session. I'm going to ask Director, Assistant Director Buckley to ask some folks to go back into the meeting room. And then we will resume. We will be returning from executive.
Those are all signed. Okay.
Thank you. Bill?
So Chairman, you're all set?
Thank you. Okay. We're back on the record on our regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, July 26th, 2022. After executive session, we're on item number four on the regular agenda, Commissioners. Item number four, minutes of the open session meeting of January 19th, 2022, acceptance.
Move approval of the minutes of January 19th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes of the open meeting letter, open meeting of the Commissioners on January 19th, 2022, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, three to zero. Number six.
Five.
Number five, public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's appropriate. You know, I would like to just speak. You know, and if not here, you know, a little later, I know what's going on here, but the reason why I'm here is, and I wanted to be very clear, you know, is I, we need to hire and keep a permanent onsite direct report registry chief information officer. It is essential, it's crucial for registry services to have an onsite direct report permanent registry CIO. And with what's on, you know, I brought a letter over yes, last week, and you know, I've been asking to meet and I will continue to ask to meet so we can, we really got to resolve this crucial matter. And I hope you take that from last week. It's meant to be collaborative. And again, I want to repeat, it's more important to work together collaboratively so we can resolve this IT issue. And I wouldn't be doing my job under the state law if I wasn't advocating the registry's position on behalf of all the registry stakeholders. You know, the registry just needs to keep a permanent onsite registry CIO and this position has been at the Registry of Deeds dating back to Register Hannan's tenure, which started back in the 1970s. And keeping a permanent registry CIO will be for the benefit of registry operations and for registry stakeholders that use and depend on the services of the Norfolk Registry of Deeds, including folks that own their homes. It's the right policy at so many levels. There were too many bad possible outcomes. And it's also in the county's interest because revenues are collected and the residents in our communities have the documents recorded there. So again, I know I've requested to meet either collectively or separately, but to get this issue, this issue is, we're so close to bad possible outcomes, Mr. Chair, because of, you know, just having to resolve this. So we have to do, we have to adjust positions. But the temporary chief information officer, the paper is in front of you a little bit later on, has resigned. And we have to really get a handle on this and soon, you know, just, we have to get a handle on it and hopefully solve this in a collaborative and hopefully constructive manner. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, before I open up to my fellow commissioners, let me tell you that this request, which is one week old, has been some time and effort put into it. It hasn't gone unnoticed, of course. We have boundaries. Without giving away any worldwide secrets here, I mean, whether it's litigation or other things that we're under, we have boundaries here and we also have a deep concern like you do about what goes on at the Registry of Deeds. But we have other people working in that department and we have been informed that the former CIO has been brought back and is there too. You can't tell me that those people can't hold the fort in every other way, just as if someone else in your department left. You know. These, some of the, certainly the Mr. Hatch, who I never met, leaving in one week, this is the next week, is an event, but it's not. I don't want to use the word insignificant or anything like that, but I mean, we're doing the very best we can to register and I'm sometimes I feel like our hands are tied based on previous on the previous events that have happened surrounding this, particularly the lawsuit. I mean, you know. We're in touch with our lawyers and, you know. Nobody wants to do the wrong thing here, but I'm, that's my, those are my comments. I'm going to regard this as a tough priority, but at the same time. Later in the agenda today, we're trying to hire another consultant to look at this, which was asked for in your letter when you came in with your comments about the Abrams report. And this is as quick as we can get it before us. I've been cautioned by the county director, you know, we need to get this going today. We need to go forward. And it's like the red badge of coverage here or the scarlet letter. I mean, the CIO and the registry, it's, you know, it sometimes you make me feel like we don't think it's important. We don't know what's going on. And that's, nothing can be further from the truth.
No, that's not my intent.
Well, I just said, you make me feel that maybe I'm, you know, but we have boundaries here. We have, we have boundaries we've got to operate under. One thing we do and then it comes back to hit you in the back of the head. But I can't speak to the other commissioners because for one week has gone by. This consultant, the hiring of this consultant is on here, which deals with it in an indirect way. Doesn't mean we can't, we need to operate without one while the consult, consultation is going on because that isn't going to happen. But I, you know. Why can't we make the second man, the acting director, work something out with the former director CIO, CIAO, who, who are you and I understand is back helping out. I mean, these people can't be ignorant to what goes on. They're certainly, the first or the latter one is not. And I don't believe they, I don't believe the second man is either, but I don't know. Commissioners, any comments on the registry's request?
No, I think you've summarized our position. I think Verstra has to understand, as clear as we can make it, we do want to have resolution. We are hampered, as you are aware, in part by the ongoing litigation. As a lawyer, you can appreciate that. We all can. So there's certain things we can and cannot do, we can and cannot say, and that, that's frustrating. It's frustrating for me. It's frustrating for us, frustrating for you. On the other hand, if we jump ahead to our agenda, as the chairman noted, we've got on our docket, a consultant, which I think is going to do a good, it's a good thing for us in terms of looking at that position independently and providing us insight into what is the appropriate measures to take to make sure we have the best IT for not only you, but for our county and for the citizens of the county. I think that was something I didn't even said. I said, when the Abraham report came in, I said, look, I'm not an IT guy, you know, I have my son help me out a lot of times. So having an independent person will help us, but that's not going to help you right now. And I understand that. You need somebody to replace Mr. Hatch. So as the chair has suggested, perhaps to some people in-house that can be promoted or somebody brought in short time, and if that's
Acting, I don't know. I don't want to use the word. I don't want to use the wrong.
Yeah, I would defer to you if you've got some suggestions or ideas. We're not going to block that, but that has to again, still be temporary until we get these other things kind of resolved, you know?
Again, and you know, not, not to blame, you mentioned the lawsuit. That lawsuit would be dismissed if we had had a permanent or registry chief information officer, you know, because it was that crucial of an issue. Now, I don't want to relive history, at least, at least we got somebody in, albeit temporary. But, and you know, not to blame, but you know, past meetings where I tried to point out that when you have someone temporary, it's not the best way to attract candidates or retain candidates. And, and I wish I wasn't here. But I'm surprised Mr. Hatch, he lasted five months, but I understand. You, you have his letter of resignation in there. I understand the whole, you know, concept from a family standpoint and trying to get some, some security and permanency, you know, but where I have an issue is, you know, when we, the lawsuit was filed to get a permanent registry chief information officer because we had none. Now someone was temporary and the reason why I'm requesting meetings, this isn't the first time I've tried to request a meeting to try to do it. And you're right, Mr. Chair, December 14th, I sent a letter saying, listen, if you're going to do things, as long as we can keep the registry CIO there and the other person that is in the registry IT department, you know, let's explore it. And, and it was only one commissioner, Commissioner Stady responded to that, you know, and I appreciate it. And I'm just here. And I will, you know, because we have to have discussions. So you're right, on December 14th, I sent the letter. As far as these alternatives, you know, again, God love Dan Caparata, he is the IT technical assistant network administrator, but he's one person. We had a pretty vibrant two-person department that's cross-trained and we're doing the best we can. And, and that's what I'm afraid of. You know, Norfolk County and the Commissioners have supported the registry. I don't feel that we've been supported in this particular issue, but take credit for what gets done at the registry and the IT department has been a big part of it. But the thing is, he would even tell you, and he didn't support the idea that an IT department wasn't being there. I mean, not to get into that. I mean, he, he wanted to keep the things the way they are as well. He would tell you that, that, you know, that's the first person I went as far as trying to replace him. And that's why we went out back in March. Going out on Indeed and going to the MMA is because the person said, I'm not ready to be a CIO. Well, of course, he's getting overloaded now, but he's one person. He's a one-armed paper hanger. As far as the former CIO, Mr. Limby, I will continue, I will try to talk to him, but he did, he retired. And as a, as sort of a favor, I think to the crisis that we're in, he cross-trains Mr. Hatch and all that. And predictably, it was predicted if Mr. Hatch wasn't permanent, that something like this could happen. So Mr. Limby, he put in his retirement papers for a reason. He wants to retire. Now, if I can continue to try to keep him along and do that. But really, the best option is to keep the registry IT department like it was, a permanent onsite direct report registry CIO and a permanent direct report, Dan Caparata, who is the IT technical assistant slash network administrator. You know, that's, that's how I look at it. And I'm just saying, in managing the registry, we've, we've had a relatively small department, but even the Abrams group said, despite the minimal staff, this department does a great job. It's just a lot harder to do it with just one person and then trying to convince somebody who's retired, can you keep your hand in, in the pie here a little longer? I will try, but the thought was, he helped cross-train Mr. Hatch and it would go, you know, not quite the way I wanted. I think it should have been permanent, but at least it was moving along. Now we're back to where we were. We don't have any registry CIO.
So you lost a person. So there's money, I'm assuming in the budget to hire somebody else, right?
Yes.
So if the chair suggests the promotion of some gentleman to another position, you could bring someone to check in. Could you advertise for that or look?
We'll take a look at that or advertise for the CIO because, you know, because the person and he's, Dan Caparata, I mean, he's a wonderful employee and he's been great, but he's overwhelmed and he has family commitments and vacation and things like that. So I know everyone says, oh, well, you know, one person can do everything. Well, we always had somebody there. There's always someone from IT there, but it was, you know, you could do it with two people, very difficult to do it with one person. So anyway, I just want to, I mean, again, I just want to solve this. I mean, it, it, there's a history to it. We can debate the history. I just want to try to move forward and solve this in the best interest. And it helps the county too, because of all the things, not to get into it, but significant amount of revenues. And I'm just worried about how close we are. I mean, you know, we, we had a fire in February of last year. You could see a fire and it could have been to bed. This is sort of a technology fire. There's some hidden dangers here with where we are that I'm really worried about. And that's, I just want to convey that.
We're aware of that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Thank, thank you. Thank you, all commissioners. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. We don't have any other public comment?
No, sir.
This concludes the matter of public comment, number five. Number six, appointments today, we have none. Number seven, old business, we have none. Number eight, we have three or four personnel matters. Five, I'm sorry, five at the school and one at the registry.
I think it's four at the school and it was a modification, Mr. Chairman. There's a, well, this is a modification.
Okay.
I have four recommended, four at the Aggie School. First, notice of contingent employment for James Hughes of Milford as a substitute instructor at the rate stated effective January 27, 22. I have a notice of contingent employment for Janet Doherty of Holbrook, Mass. as a substitute instructor, again, at the rate stated for January 27, 22. And notice of resignation of William Regan of Metfield, Mass. as a substitute worker at the rate stated effective January 13, 22. And a change of address for Lauren Ziska of Foxborough, Mass. effective January 26. I'll make that all my motion as they pertain to the Aggie School.
Did we miss the notice of wage increase for Leonard Page?
He is under Walston Recreation.
Says custodian.
It was a change. Yeah, that's why.
Okay, I didn't have that.
So motions are made. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, second is Registry of Deeds. As discussed, notice of resignation of Richard Hatch of Plimpton, Mass. as the chief information officer effective January 24, 22.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the resignation of Richard Hatch of Plimpton, Mass. as chief information officer effective 1/24/22, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And now for Walston Recreation Facility, a notice of a minimum wage increase for Leonard Page of Quincy as custodian at the rate of $4.25 an hour effective January 26.
I had $14.50 an hour.
Right, and that was the change.
Correct, it's $14.25.
It's $14.25, right, that's what I said.
This is $14.
That's incorrect. That's incorrect.
That was the correction she brought in.
That's why I was different.
I did not know it was.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, second.
Motion made and seconded relative to the increase of the minimum wage for Leonard Page of Quincy, Mass. as custodian, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number nine, payroll expense warrants for pool, I think they have the permission.
Yep, I'll go with that. Move the county payroll 22-30, the amount of $134,717.71, so moved.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's three to zero. Next.
Mr. Chairman, for you, move the school payroll 22-30, percentage 15, the amount of $325,615.95, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Third, the expense of the county of January 4, 22, the amount of $118,325.29, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next, expense of the school, 22-07D, in the amount of $53,397.19, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next, the debt, county debt and interest, 22-4, the amount of $1,4,944.44, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And finally, for the Walston Recreation Facility, sales tax of $128.22, $276.03, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This concludes the payroll expense warrant for today's meeting. Number 10, bid openings at 1:30, we have none. Number 11, contract awards, Nancy. We have awards for the Commissioners Office, maintenance facility, at Walston Recreation and the Registry of Deeds.
Yes. The first one is recommended award to the Ripples Group for the technology consulting services and an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Any questions? The rip, is, pronounce that again.
Ripples.
That's what I thought. I said, okay. This is the technology on the IT. You're right. Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Do we have a second?
I'd like that motion to approve.
I'm sorry, I thought we made one. Okay, you're making a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, any discussion, yes.
So again, I got the materials. Once the, when are they going to give the report to us?
End of April.
Say again?
End of April.
Thank you, okay.
New basket and timing, man. We talked about our deadline and budget. Okay.
Three months.
Okay.
Good question.
And you checked on some of the references of that?
Oh, yes.
Company, okay.
Strongly recommend it.
Okay, sounds good. But no further questions.
See for the packet that they have extensive experience in public administration, the trial court mainly. I've seen several other state level assessments similar to this thing. This is the world.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded toward the bid for the technology assessment study to the Ripples Group effective conclusion today's meeting to be deliverable by the end of the week. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Next.
Okay.
Financial service consultant, next.
Next is the recommendation to award the financial consulting services to the Abrams Group in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
Okay.
Actually, I make the motion.
Motion made is, do we have a second?
Yeah. I'll second, yeah.
Okay, discussion.
So I did read this one carefully. I had a question on page three, if I could, directed to the director. Top of the page, it says, we'll have everything wrapped up before July 1st. But my concern was, don't we want it before that? Am I reading that wrong? I mean, we did this stuff. The purpose of this consultant is to help us prepare our budgets for
23.
For 23, which is our ongoing stuff coming up. So if he's not going to have it done before July 1st, what, I'm confused here.
So this particular contract covers two specific areas of service.
Yep.
The first one, you're absolutely correct, includes direct assistance preparing the FY23 budget, which will primarily commence immediately
Yeah.
through May.
Okay.
The second prong of the contract is to help draft the county's first internal control plan. I believe the individual was named in this report. I cannot remember her name. But she will be working with me on that product. That can take up until the end of June.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, good.
It's still deliverables.
Yep, no, I got it. And there was one other one I had. I did call, I told you a couple of people, references were good. Yeah, now that was it. That was the only thing I had. So there's two parts to this thing.
There is.
One is ongoing, like if we prepare our budgets soon, right?
Correct.
And then the other one before the end of the year.
Okay.
No problem. Thank you.
Specifically, we have, for the first time, departments are putting in their budgets into BudgetSense.
Right, right.
The salary component, however, is not ready. And so departments are using an Excel template, Commissioner, to calculate their individual departmental salary projections for FY23. That information has to get into BudgetSense. This consultant will thwart that and prepare through discussions with Tyler, who manages BudgetSense, that module to be live and active going forward after the preparation of this fiscal year.
Have you forewarned the department heads of the service that will be coming to help them out?
It's been spoken about at the department level. Yeah, I've had department head meetings and I've informed them that this is, that this is, this is coming. I believe I put that in our cover memo up to the departments as well.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
A motion made and seconded on the hiring of the Abrams Group for a financial service contract to be concluded on or above June 1st, up the end of the fiscal year. All in favor?
Yep, aye.
It is a vote. We're going to consume that one. The next one is facility maintenance at the Walston Recreation Facility. It's the service of the burners and burn, burner and burners. Nancy.
Yes. Yeah, this is both for facilities and the golf course. It's a three.
Oh, okay, it's both. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's a three-year contract recommended award to industrial burner systems.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion of question, how long we got on industrial burner contract?
I think we'll be going into our third or fourth, three-year contract with them.
Okay. No questions. A motion made and seconded to award the contract for servicing of burner and burners. Facility maintenance, all direct to industrial burner, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is a vote. Lastly, lease of two Canon copiers at the Registry of Deeds for two years.
If this is, I'm going to be awarded to Innovex, it's a lease of two Canon copiers. And the amount of $13,13, $20 a month. It includes all maintenance, service and toner for a period of two years. The pricing came from State Contract ITC 66.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Any comments about the lease of two Canon copiers at the Registry of Deeds? I have a question. I have heard Nancy does a worldwide process, honestly, nationwide. No one can get any toner. Have you heard anything about this?
I hope we just didn't jinx this, but so far we're not having a problem getting toner.
Okay, but I heard it from several different government agencies.
No, I believe it.
One, but like three.
I just wanted to.
And I just, I just, if you could mention it to the vendor or, you know.
I'll bring it up.
Yeah, just bring it up. I mean, we are what we are.
I'll find out.
Nancy, how long is our?
Speaking.
Go ahead, I beg your pardon, sorry.
Speaking of, of copiers, I don't have to echo Commissioner Stady, but I will. This, some of these things are coming out, I think, in various. I'm having a little eye problem anyway, but this is getting.
Ooh, that was a tough one.
I can have some time.
Okay, that's the only reason they.
I think it was dirty. Sometimes if the filter is dirty.
It's a copy of a copy of a card.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have one year left on this contract.
Okay.
So as part of that contract, the third page, the chairman has to sign, so I'll move it to the chairman's side.
Yes.
Thank you. Want a second to have a discussion?
Sure, second, I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you. And I'll put a PSE. And I'll put a P S A, what about the toner? No, okay. Thanks.
I'm going to Staples after this meeting, stuck up.
Okay, um-
After I get my bread and milk, of course. Blizzard.
I think we're all set on awards today, Nancy, after we sign this.
Yes, you are, there's one more thing I should need on the last document.
Thank you.
What's it come about, industrial burner?
Industrial burner systems.
Oh, systems, thank you. All right, thank you.
This is my tip.
Am I, we signing the blues here, the blues? Are these to be-
Yeah, we're signing all of them.
Okay. Start doing that, don't they?
Tell you what, why don't we, why don't we sign that when you can report on the American Rescue Plan Act? Well, we'll be, we'll be signed.
Right, so that, Commissioner?
I'm ready, uh, the number twelve. Twelve, reporting American Rescue Plan.
Thank you, I have no uh awards uh this week. I had anticipated the town of Milton's might be ready. They're looking at a, a project that I believe has reached the final stage. Oh, it had not been approved within the portal, um, but I may have it before you next week. Um, that'll be the next award. Uh, the, incidentally, the town of Walpole uh input four applications yesterday um for their ARPA request. We'll see how, well, they move through the uh process, that's correct.
Were they a variety of different?
They were, yeah, all different, mainly uh roadwork, sewer, things like that, um, but uh infrastructure. Uh, this afternoon, Commissioners, I wish to talk to you about a matter involving uh the change to the um American Rescue Plan Act through the final rule that was promulgated by Congress on January sixth. This uh particular change has impacted the way the category known as revenue loss or revenue replacement is calculated. Very briefly, last week, I updated the Commissioners that Assistant Director Buckley and I had met with the Norfolk County Managers um a week ago prior to our meeting, and discussed this matter to get their feedback uh and concerns over the change. Um, I believe I've given each of you a copy of the spreadsheet. Um, in the event that you need another copy, please let me know. But effectively, what the uh final rule did is it set a limit for uh the county in this case uh of ten million dollars to distribute funds under this category of revenue loss. We've heard from several communities, Norwood and Foxborough and Medfield mainly, that the limit would uh disproportionately affect their proposed ARPA requests because they were looking to apply for a substantial amount of their grant uh under this category. The problem is collectively, those would easily surpass the ten million dollar cap. Um, one, one particular town uh took upon themselves to initiate a uh a letter to various political stakeholders, including congressional delegation, the governor, lieutenant governor, and representatives, um appealing for a change to this final rule, um, and looking for some flexibility from uh the Treasury on expanding the cap or using um this category for additional purposes. Notwithstanding that appeal uh that come before you today to seek your consensus in or vote to uh endorse a recommendation. During a, a recent multi-county conversation, the counties discussed which approach would make sense to cope with this new rule and the effect it has on our grants. Uh, I will tell you, Plymouth County is, uh, let me give you the options first. Uh, the, the discussions came forth about, number one, closing down the option, shutting off the button, if you will, not enabling any community currently to have access to the revenue replacement option until such time that the county uh felt uh sufficiently that they had control over how the funds could be dispersed. Number two, the option would be first in, first out. If you're one of those communities that is ready and wants to put their revenue replacement request in, you could gain access to that ten million dollar cap. Uh, the problem with that option is those smaller communities or communities that don't have active strategies that may have an interest in this option, if they were to delay their applications, they would not likely be benefiting from that.
They would shut up.
They could get shut up. The third option, which is represented in the spreadsheet I show you, uh, that I show you today, is to replicate the model that the county used to distribute uh the funds to each uh community in the first place. And remember, back in July, one hundred thirty-seven million came in. We adopted the two thousand nineteen um population model to distribute the share of that particular value among the communities. I'm using the same approach to distribute the share of what the ten million dollar benefit would be under this model. You will see on the final column that uh absent the three communities which are known as metropolitan cities, that's Quincy, Brookline and Waymouth, there are twenty-five remaining communities that would proportionately share the benefit based on population of this ten million dollar um revenue cap under revenue loss. So, propose that today. This will not give some communities full access according to their expressed wishes to the benefit, but it does give them some. I'll draw attention to Norwood, for example. They have expressed an interest in a total of one point two million dollars for revenue loss. Under this model, they'll get approximately half of that.
I have a quick question.
So, head commission.
Um, why is Brookline not part of that?
These three communities that are known as metropolitan cities were designated by the U.S. Treasury as different types of recipients because of their population size. Each of those communities independently received more than ten million dollars um in direct aid from the Treasury.
They already got it.
They, so, they are not, they, they have the ten million dollar cap benefit to their own benefit.
And Brookline didn't get that?
Oh, it is, these are the ones that are over fifty thousand.
Brookline did.
Okay.
Brookline, Quincy and Waymouth.
Okay, cause, cause it only, it didn't show Brookline on the, on the bottom, that's all.
I looked at this, I don't know, he was-
This title, it, it should not say Braintree, it should say Brooklyn.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks, appreciate it.
Excellent pick, pick, Commissioner, I even looked at this, an hour of mine, and didn't notice it.
All right, so, it, it's funny, so, uh, if I may, may I continue? Mr. Chairman, so, um, I had talked to the Director about this issue earlier, and I thought the only fair way to treat all of our um constituent cities and towns um equally would be to apportion it based on population, just as we did when we started the whole ARPA distribution, and I thought it was the only fair way to do it. Now, if at the end, there's extra money under that ten million dollar cap, I'd say it'd be up for grabs for at least initially, I would say it would have to be a percentage based upon your population. I, I don't see any other way of being fair.
Can you fill for me a few things? Norwood, follow me, where are you getting? Norwood, you need a certain amount, they're getting half.
Um, Norwood certainly notified us in their letter um to the delegations that they had an interest in a total of one point two million in revenue loss benefits. However, under the final, under this distribution model uh based on population, Commissioner Stady, they'd be entitled to approximately uh, about six hundred thousand. Five hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and sixteen cents.
Okay, so you, they told you they wanted one point two, that's not on the sheet here. I was trying to pick it up, okay.
But in under, I, but choosing the third option, we could give them six hundred, almost six hundred thousand dollars now, and then we could reconsider more money at a later date if we still had money left.
I, yeah, but, oh, yeah, this, I want to, I want to talk it through, I like your idea, I do, but um Norwood was one of the ones that wrote the letter to Congressman uh uh Lynch, didn't they say that? At the management meeting, I listened to it. So, what happens if Congressman Lynch and others, Officer Claus, all of them get together and say, well, we're gonna change that advisory, that what happens?
The advisory comes from the U.S. Treasury.
Right.
I would imagine through the congressional acts, they would have to amend the American Rescue Plan Act legally to accommodate any kind of change like that, they'd have to change the law. Is that likely? I will tell you, yes, in my experience it is. Um, this grant has three more years, uh, three to five, depending upon your pers, your perspective. The CARES Act, which has expired, as you know, that went through sixteen changes.
Okay.
Um, so it's possible, likely, I would add, that the Congress and Treasury will amend the guidelines on this down the road, um, depending upon how communities are using the funds, they want to optimize this use. So, I'm sure they're taking into consideration not just the, the recent correspondence, but all correspondence, they're receiving feedback on how effective this grant is working for communities, so.
Right, now, I'm gonna throw a couple at you, so bear with me, so. Now, based again in that conversation, and again, trying to be fair, I, I understand Commissioner Collins' viewpoint, but there were a couple of towns that said, we're not interested in revenue replacement. Where we want to do water, we want to do, so, what happens if that money, you're allocating, say, Avon or Canton or Sharon, and, well, we don't care about revenue placement. Can we take some of that money that might have been, say, going to Sharon or Avon?
We could.
And that'll tax Norwood, who needs that money?
We could theoretically, any community that doesn't make full use of their uh ten million dollar allotment could be placed back into a pool. It's a similar conversation, Commissioner, that we had back in the summer regarding the collective use of the award in general. Because we talked about some communities who may not be able to spend their entire ARPA grant.
Right.
We'll take a snapshot as we approach the final year to see where, where do communities stand, are you having difficulty? Do you not have enough infrastructure, economic development, broadband? So, do, do you need assistance closing out your grant balance? So, in addition to assessing whether or not they will use their benefit of revenue replacement, we will also be talking to them about, do you need assistance closing out your grants? The same dynamic.
Okay.
We'll be managing, helping them manage that resource.
That's cool, last question, if I may, last question. Based on, it's early, it's still early, and, you know, it's ongoing, but based on what you're seeing in terms of applications in the portal and the meetings that you and uh Bill Buckey are going to, i- is revenue high on the list, down the list, in between, what are you feeling?
Uh, we, uh, we have two applications in the portal right now for revenue replacement.
Yeah.
Um, one of them, I believe, was rejected, and I don't know why, the other one is still in draft, I believe it's Debs.
Okay. So, if we go with Commissioner Collins' suggestion to back up, this would be a per capita distribution on a revenue replacement allocation.
For now.
For now, and those Waymouth, Quincy, Brooklines exempt.
They have their own game.
They have their own, and then af, if this money changes, then we can let them know.
We'll revisit it, yep, down the road.
Yeah, it makes sense.
And I want to check that.
Then I have a comment, go ahead.
There's one more part of this, too. Um, so, I, I think what we're doing now is fair for now.
Yeah.
That, the rules that were given by um the Treasury may change, and we can change with them.
Yep.
But, what if you have a town that says right now that they're not interested in revenue replacement? But that town has elected leadership, which changes over time, where the town might find that they have different needs as things go along, this is over three to five years. And so, I think we can move with it as we move along, but we can't move with it as we move along if we just do it all out right now. It, it, it won't work. So, if we, if we want to be fair with everybody, I think it's a, this is how much we can give you today, maybe we can give you more later.
Well, be, not to cut you off, Commissioner, but you voted last week to um allot fifty percent of an award um at this time, we wouldn't be giving them their full allotment at this time.
So, right now, if they're asking, right, we, the most we can give them is, is, is half their allotment, so Norwood is asking for
One point two.
One point two.
We're gonna give them six hundred.
We're gonna, we're gonna give them six hundred, but you can only give them half of six hundred right now, is that what you're saying?
Uh, give them half of the half.
It depends. Their, their title award, their entire award is five point six million dollars. So, they're entitled up to two point eight million dollars today.
Okay, okay.
But if they put in for uh more than six hundred thousand dollars, we cannot give it to them.
Right, yes, okay.
Okay. Okay. It is it. I'm not for holding up. I'm for getting the money out.
Right.
But we're, we're bound by Department of Treasury rules, they did, we put together proud of what we've done so far, and I think it's going good. But I agree, we can, if we have to change, we'll change. But we can't give to the towns what, what Uncle Ken isn't gonna put through, that isn't gonna approve.
Right.
Not that we can't work with them.
What was the other option, thank you, Mr. Chairman? Did Plymouth, you said Plymouth is just shutting the valve off?
For now.
They're not doing anything.
They are not accepting the application.
I'm not in favor of that.
No.
Are you?
No, I, I don't see the, without, and again, I uh, I learned a lot from the county, and Treasury, Treasury, O'Brien in particular, but
I just love to be communicating.
Some missing something.
But like, if we're gonna go with this idea, Mr. Chairman, communicate to the towns again what's happening, I think, I think they know that through their managers, but not all of them are there.
Frankly, not all of them will be happy. Because some of them feel that this rule literally moved the goalposts um from where it was two weeks ago, where there was a technically unlimited cap for revenue replacement for calculating revenue replacement. And we regret that, and we expressed that at the meeting last week, but as Commissioner Shea said.
Rules are rules.
We didn't write, we're, we're, we're managing.
I think there's several towns that indirectly have had some conversation with, they're getting ready to file, they're very close to filing, so, it's good, but I'm just saying, it may have the wrong information on our revenue, so, we have to make sure we get them know, you know? Have you sent out an advisory or something, or?
Yes, we, we keep in regular contact with them, and we will let them know, um.
And do you want to motion today?
I would, actually, I was just gonna ask for that, it would help the, it would help the uh, the, the policy of how we're managing this move forward.
I'll move that we, that we, uh, I, I'd like to move the third option.
Which is?
The revenue uh replacement distribution based on two thousand nineteen population.
Yeah, presented by Director Korn.
Correct.
Okay.
And this issue may be revisited at a later date, depending on the rules provided to us by the Treasury.
Yep, I will second the motion. Motion made and seconded, any, any further discussion done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Director Korn.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Report on COVID-nineteen responses.
I will say, if I could, just like on the American Rescue-
Go back.
I say with pride, collectively, always. Uh, I was listening in to a, a regional call that involves some mayors of other areas, not Norfolk County, so I won't name them, but they include Congressman Austin Claus, who is in our district, and uh Brookline. And I was amazed to hear some of the comments by some of the mayors who haven't even started the beginning, the process of, you know, the opera, anyway, and they, one of the mayors said, well, when can we get started? And the Congressman says, he said, what are you waiting for, you know? It's time to get going, you know, just say, the Norfolk County, I think, is way ahead of the curve here. And then, you know, we, we have a lot of good people to thank for that, we were, certainly were ahead in terms of getting in place, you know?
You might be, you'll be getting sick of it, because I, I do say that every time we give something out, and that, you know?
Yeah.
I, I have no idea. Nor do I, it isn't, it isn't that I don't care, how, how the non-county cities are going, towns are gonna receive them, yeah? Again, no, either way, you know?
They're not in our area, they're not, somebody's mayors were mayors of other places, but they were on the call, and it was amazing.
I know, I mean, it's the state, set up a system like we have, and getting back to them.
No, I, it's like-
There are some-
This is exactly what I wanted about it.
State has about that.
Yeah, it's, you know, anyway, discussion for another day, but Norfolk County, do your nice job.
This has been an eye opener, to say the least.
Yes.
I only got one eye, but okay.
I agree.
Okay, this, any more comments on the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one?
COVID-nineteen, huh?
Number thirteen, any more, any comments about COVID-nineteen response?
Mr. Commissioner. Just to uh alert folks listening, department heads alike, that if um any additional uh COVID test kits are needed, please alert me, we have um a, a store of some amount We have, um, a, a store of some amount left over from the initial dispersment made a couple of weeks ago, so just let us know if you need any more for your staff. That's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Number fourteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, sir. Um, regarding the Wallison recreational, um, course, the, uh, new restaurant, um, contract, which was open last week, um, had some matter, had some issues with it. Nancy and I have spoken. She's rebidding it and expects the contract to be, uh, reopened at the end of February. Um, the, the vendor that had submitted had admitted some areas that were necessary for submission. He's been alerted, and he'll have to clean that up through the open procurement process. Last week, uh, Carl Minor, Michelle Leabodini, and I, uh, interviewed the candidate for assistant superintendent. Um, we unanimously, um, felt that Mr. George Sullivan, uh, who I believe some of you know, former assistant superintendent, should be retired, uh, whose paperwork is in play. I would expect you'll see his blue paper for appointment sometime in February, as he's looking for a late February start date.
So it's fair to say that George Sullivan is going to return to the.
To the same, to the same job.
It is.
Can I, can I make a comment? Without being fresh, the grass is not always green. And George has learned this, so he's coming back.
We've all learned it over time.
Oh, yes.
Good, good.
Yeah, it's good. And, and I know, I know this was a burden for Paul, this one, and Paul being the person who holds the licenses along with George, but without George, yet, Paul was doing double or triple duty.
That was a nice groundkeeper's pun, too.
I know.
That was pretty good.
Yeah. Alright.
Full of mask and all, it was good.
Um, I want to alert the commissioners that all department head evaluations for mid-year have been completed. I met with everyone. Uh, got good feedback. Uh, folks are generally engaged in their goals. Uh, we had one that had to be scratched because of some, um, administrative needs and reintroducing a new goal, but overall, they're done. Uh, so we're on track to see that process through. Um, I want to alert the commissioners that, uh, Michelle Abadini's produced a phenomenal report here. A little big, but I think our old eyes can appreciate that. This report is a used lose report. We've talked a little bit about the policy that was put in place roughly twenty, uh, two by the commissioners. Um, this coming June thirtieth ends the period of time for individuals to, um, use time that they had accumulated. I'm gonna ask Michelle to take, uh, this information and individually send out notices through the department heads of the used lose conditions of every employee. There are a handful of employees in the county, uh, this, by the way, excludes the schools, um, that have very high used lose days uh, between now and June thirtieth. A handful. By and large, most people will have no difficulty clearing that balance. Make that available to you if you'd like to look at it, but, uh, she did a beautiful job on that. Great tool. We're giving folks at least five months to deal with this. Uh, they've already been alerted several times. This will be a more clear directive to, uh, try to use your time before you lose it June thirtieth. Yesterday, um, I attended a, um, trial court meeting with my partner, Charles, Charles O'Brien. Uh, we met in Quincy District Court and discussed the status of Stoughton District Court, which he had a, an interest in, as well as the condition of the Quincy District Court and the, uh, activity associated with, um, uh, the testing that's going on right now for hazardous material and readiness, if you will, for the, uh, disposition of Quincy District Court. Brought him up to speed on all that. One thing that was, um, a very interesting part of the conversation was Mr. O'Brien was expressing a strong interest in developing a, uh, full-blown asset, um, assessment plan for all courts in the Commonwealth. He asked if I had an interest in it, and I said, please consider me your first, um, uh, test case. I would love very much to, uh, make use of his contractual services to come in and assess all the, uh, components of our courts, uh, and then use that as a springboard into planning, uh, deferred maintenance, uh, capital replacement and so forth. Um, this is, I, we had a conversation about the benefit of, uh, facility software and the need to implement it. Um, and I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. O'Brien. Uh, we'll meet again in, uh, a couple of months. We have our regular meetings. We talk about, um, the condition of the, uh, courts, any issues coming up with regard to staffing. Um, and also, uh, we did talk a little bit about air quality needs and problems as they emerge. And finally, I alerted them that, as, as the commissioners may know, last year Quincy had to endure, uh, a period of time where, um, it got very hot in the middle of July, and the air cooling systems in that building, uh, were not keeping up. We, uh, we funded, um, the repair, rebuilding, if you will, of one, of two of the condensers at that facility, and, uh, that work will be done, I believe, over the next month or two. Mr. McGowan is working on that to make sure that, uh, that backup system can provide cool air when we get into the season for such. But I made it clear to Mr. O'Brien that a lot of what we're doing is just simply trying to keep the existing infrastructure, which is already at end of life, going. And then I don't know if that system has two or three more summers in it. It likely does not. And as we approach the end stage, we may be looking at systems that are irreparable and having to bring in external solutions, so uh, all eyes are open on it, but, um, it was a good meeting overall. Uh, see, I just wanted to alert folks, uh, they should have received an email from Phil Ian Tosker on my behalf, alerting, um, folks of the upcoming, uh, departmental budget reviews with the commissioners. Uh, this would call for on February twenty-third, uh, at one thirty, Maintenance Department would be the first budget in, followed on March second with Engineering, Wallson Treasurer's Office, the Commissioners, and R S V P and I T. On March ninth, um, the rep, the Commissioners would receive the register of deeds in the agricultural high school. This, um, this schedule, uh, was sent out earlier this week, I believe, on January twenty-first, so the department heads understand when they, uh, are expected to come before you.
So this is gonna be sent out and posted.
Could you repeat that?
This is gonna be sent out immediately and posted, so we're not gonna hear. I wasn't ready.
I don't know if I got that.
Correct. Um, certainly.
Might, might, might be a little ambitious to have the registry and the school on the same page. The others, I.
That could be.
But I'm not, maybe it isn't. I don't know. Um, we've got time to change it, but that's my.
Also trying to work around at least one vacation.
I mean, I'm, we're gonna try to keep, we're gonna try to keep to all our dates. That's why if we need to do some more, you know, diligence before we post it, but then I'm not saying we do, but.
Yeah. I saw that, yeah.
Uh, the last item, just happy to report that the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant that the county received, uh, to combat COVID. This was the, uh, one that, I believe, was fifty-eight thousand dollars that dispersed funds to Walpole Fire. Uh, the, the Dove Organization, the Manan Organization, has closed. All three organizations successfully spent all grant awards. Uh, I want to thank Robert Pearson for his help, um, handling the administration back end, uh, with the, uh, Just Grants Portal. Um, we're in good shape to, uh, close that grant up at the end of this month. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any questions of the director? Any comments?
Can you, can you think about maybe flip-flopping one of the ones on the second and the ninth?
I, I'll do whatever you're.
I mean, just.
I'd separate. Those are our two biggest departments.
Cause you got two big ones.
That, everything, everything's new at the school.
Kinda, yeah, maybe switch the second, one of the second ones.
Just in case, again.
Okay. I don't know, just a thought.
So like, uh, move, move like the treasurer's office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe have the treasurer and the register together.
Okay.
That's a good call. And then have the school with us, or something like that. How's that?
Okay.
Kinda makes a nice little.
Uh, I'll talk to Phil. We'll, we'll make that change.
Any more information from D C A M on the status of Quincy Court?
Yes, um, forgive me if I, I thought I gave an update last week, but if I didn't, I'm sorry. Um, they are actively looking at, um, an appraisal schedule.
Okay.
Um, Nancy was kind enough to get me, um, a quote for an appraiser. Um, we, the commissioners, I should say, the county have a certain, um, relatively, uh, well-defined process that you must follow to dispose of a county property. It involves hearings, timeframes, and so forth. So not surprisingly, the state has the same obligations to procure property. So what Heidi Green mentioned to me when I spoke to her last week was perhaps we should schedule a, a conference call between our teams so that we know what we both have to do independently to achieve the administrative outcome of, of liquidating the property. Um, she did mention that one of the challenges that they are experiencing, and she was gonna follow up with, is the, the status of removing, uh, staff and the operations from Quincy to another leased location, um, that has not been determined yet. It's gonna be, it is the biggest challenge in front of D C A M right now, Commissioner. But, um, the next step will be for both parties to discuss the legal sequence, if you will, of what needs to be done. Um, it's clear that I have, we have to do an appraisal, they do too, and then we'll compare apples and apples. We'll try.
Hey, good.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And it's coming.
It's coming.
I'm hearing that since.
It's coming.
Peters are nearing it since you came in.
It's coming.
Okay, last call. Any items you did not anticipate or anything extra that needs to be discussed?
I got some questions on this, but I want to call you and talk about that tomorrow, on this here, that could get ready for this, the.
All the evidence.
That's gonna be.
Yeah, that's just kinda, you know, I don't know if we're gonna be doing it collectively, individually, or, that's our guideline.
This is a guideline so that we can be very ready.
Right.
When we're talking with certain department, we can, we can highlight, well, in every report, we saw this, what do you think, and what, by the.
Right, right. So this is gonna be our bible, our reference.
Yeah.
As the budget process. I had a couple of que- I can call you tomorrow.
Absolutely.
No big deal.
Of course.
Um.
I'm good.
I know, I, I know our maintenance department will be ready for the storm.
Yeah.
The good news is it's coming on the weekend, so by Monday, I expect.
Down to the table?
Oh, well, usually they do a great job, and it will be.
Yeah, there's no second storm coming, is there?
I don't think so.
I'm an overambitious teacher.
Most.
Said, it could be no school Monday, and I'm like, what?
As Register Donald said when he came in, I mean, mo- every, this, everyone is predicting it.
Yeah.
But, but, well, I don't know, what.
Yeah. Boy.
They do a great job, and I know that, uh,
Wishful thinking.
Superintendent McGowan is ready, and Avon, with his team. Any other questions? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Good job.
At two forty-four.
Motion adjourned at, uh, two forty-four, yeah.
On the second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of adjournment?
Hi.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.